... respond at two lights out.
(laughing).
Yes. So, we are thrilled to have so many people with us this evening. We have academic scholars, we have sport, you know, exceptional athletes, we have some really amazing teacher awards, and we are just thrilled you could all join us. And we will try to be very speedy. I know people are excited about studying for those finals and getting home to enjoy the weather. So, without further ado, we will get started. Roll call, please.
Obviously, I can't give my standard speech because all board members are not here this evening, but Lynn is, I believe, out of the country, and hence absent.
Thank you. If you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to begin our special presentations, and Dr. Wall is going to lead us in many of those. So, Dr. Wall, please.
Thanks, Leila. Great to have everybody out tonight. As Leila said, some great recognition this evening. What we're going to do as far as pictures, if you are in a group tonight being recognized, we're going to get a picture of you with your group at the break, okay? There'll be a little break after recognition for all of you that are here to know that that break will be a nice opportunity for you to maybe go on to other endeavors, as Leila said. So, but the groups want to take a picture up here, the board will be behind me, nice photo opportunity for the groups. Individuals, you'll be recognized, walk across in front of the dais, and then Courtney will take your picture in front of the flag, okay? So, without further ado, we have a very special presentation tonight to start off the evening, the Stephen A. Backer Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year Award. I'd like to invite Ben Backer up to the podium. Ben is the son of Stephen. Ben, thanks for being here this evening representing the family.
Appreciate that.
Stay right here. And then we have Stephanie and Barb from CEF, we're going to bring them forward as they're part of this recognition this evening. We have Dr. Amy Dudley. (laughing). Feel like I'm in Oz coming up from behind the curtain. Will present a recognition from Curriculum Instruction and Assessment to the Teacher of the Year. We have with us the family of Todd Stewart. Todd, would you come up, please? Come on up, Todd. This is about you, buddy. Todd is a teacher at Clay Middle School. Received his BS in History and International Studies at Taylor University in 2000, is an English teacher for us, and spent some time actually in Seoul, Korea, beginning his teaching career. Hired as a social studies teacher, oh, you did English first, tricky, now social studies, at Clay. Football and track assistant coach at Clay Middle School as well. Youth leader at Northview Church. Just a couple comments from his colleagues when he was nominated for this prestigious honor. "Todd focuses on the whole child, not just academically, but the social, emotional well-being of students make him an outstanding and influential educator." Another comment. "Todd's one of the hardest-working and dedicated teachers I've ever worked with in my 22-year career in education." Last one. "Todd is always opening the minds of our children to greater world beyond the classroom walls." Todd will represent Carmel Clay Schools at the Indiana Teacher of the Year Competition that will be held next fall. We're very proud that you are our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. Let's give him a round of applause. In addition, I'm going to have Dr. Dudley say a few words from Curriculum Instruction and Ben, on behalf of the family, and the ladies from CEF, if you have a couple more things you're going to get tonight.
Excellent. Can you just stay right there?
Well, Todd, congratulations. We're very excited that you're representing us as Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year. And on behalf of the Division of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, I want to present you with a $500 professional development grant that you can use to continue your fine professional development. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. (applause). Congratulations, Todd. This award was created, or the endowment was created, eight years ago when my father passed away to honor his service to the community. I don't think he could be more proud of what this has turned into. Just graduating from college, it's really cool to see this award because it's a full circle in how people like Todd make these dreams come true and really push people to their best. So, thank you, Todd.
Congratulations.
(laughing). Say a few words.
Well, this time I at least had a couple seconds to prepare before I had to stand up. To be honest with you, like I tell my students when they come in for cadet teaching, I was like, "You're going to experience teaching, but if you don't absolutely love teaching, don't do it." Because every single morning, I'm surrounded by people that when I wake up and I go out into the room, the other teachers, they're teaching with passion, they're teaching with energy, and there's just a room full of people in here with just great camaraderie. My family has been unbelievably supportive throughout my career. I had a grandfather that just started off with the old, "You'll know your flashcards," and he taught me the value of study. And my mom, she was one of those people that was like, "You're definitely going to need to learn how to get stuff in on time." And that just like hitting me with those like, just those values, those core values, and they were both teachers. But also, my father contributed just the ability to tell a story, which I think is so valuable for all teachers, just to bring energy to your subject, to bring life in just that whole thing. So, when I'm working with these people and the camaraderie's high, and when you're at Clay Middle School and you just, your administration looks at you and says, "Now, I think that is a good idea. Why don't you go give that a try? I think it's a great idea." That kind of passion, that belief in you, the support from all the families, the parents, and just overall, the great students that I work with every day just make my job awesome. So, I can honestly say that I teach because I love it, and I just love working here. Thank you.
(applause). There's a plaque over here that we'll be hanging in Clay Middle School for the next year, recognizing Todd as our Teacher of the Year. Moving right along, we have a very exciting opportunity to recognize Carmel Clay Schools' Support Staff Member of the Year. I'd like to call Deborah Taylor forward, please. (applause). Deborah was hired in Carmel Clay Schools as a bus aide in 2006. Additional position, she started food service at Clay Middle School in 2007. She moved from a bus aide to a bus driver in 2008 with routes for Carmel Elementary and Carmel High School. Comments from parents, colleagues, and supervisors include some of the following. Deb is incredibly dedicated, positive, and friendly on a daily basis to all the children that ride her bus. Deb has the incredible ability to connect with students of all ages, as she has elementary and high school students that she sees every day. Makes the bus a fun and safe place, giving out holiday gift bags and hosting an end-of-the-year pizza party for the children. You know, bus drivers, I think, are, I don't, Roger and I, none of us, take them for granted. First smiling face at the beginning of the day, last smiling face at the end of the day. Such a value-added commodity to Carmel Clay Schools, and Deb, you represent that in its highest fashion. We congratulate you, recognize you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
(applause). In addition to the plaque that's over there that will hang in Clay, and maybe at the bus garage, however you want to do it. You've got two spots. $500 check from the Carmel Clay Schools for recognizing your service and your exemplary interactions with our students and staff, just a small token of our appreciation. Thank you very much. (applause). Deb. I'd like to invite Amy Dudley, Dr. Amy Dudley, to the podium, please. We're going to recognize our young artists from all of our 15 schools. Amy?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to honor our young artists that will decorate our boardroom for the next six months. You can see the beautiful works of art behind us that our young artists have completed. Before I call up each of our young artists to come and shake hands with Dr. Wall and then stand in front of the dais, I'd like to first recognize our art teachers that are in the audience. If you would please stand, our, if we have our art teachers, I know we have several. (applause). And thank you so much for encouraging our students and continuing to help our students to grow and learn as artists. And so, we're excited that you are here this evening to support our young artists. So, without further ado, our young artists, we have Evan Haran, a second-grade student at Carmel Elementary. (applause). Sydney Rembo, a 10th-grade student at Carmel High School. Lindsay Toll, an 8th-grade student at Carmel Middle. Kendall Henson, a 2nd-grade student at Cherry Tree Elementary. Emma Bischoff, an 8th-grade student at Clay Middle. Katie Zale, a 2nd-grade student at College Wood Elementary. Elon Varan, an 8th-grade student at Creekside Middle. Debbie Dirksen, a 4th-grade student at Forestdale Elementary. Oliver Westbrook, a kindergarten student at Mohawk Trails. Brooke Ratcliffe, a 3rd-grade student at Orchard Park Elementary. Reese Weber, a 5th-grade student at Prairie Trace Elementary. Allison Ing, a 5th-grade student at Smokey Row. Erin Kong, a 5th-grade student at Town Meadow. Lauren Bloomberg, a 2nd-grade student at West Clay. Emerson Weaver, a 5th-grade student at Woodbrook Elementary. And congratulations to our young artists.
Okay. You want to do it now? Okay, Courtney, you want to get a picture real quick? You're going to have to scrunch them in a little bit.
(laughing).
Okay. Congratulations. (applause). We're going to recognize the DECA students from Carmel High School. Mr. Reed?
Thanks for being here this evening. You bet. Tonight, I have a great privilege just to introduce some of our outstanding DECA students this year. For those of you who don't know, DECA is an international marketing organization with over 225,000 members in the world, competing for one spot on a stage, and we'll actually name some world champions tonight. But many of the students here, all of them that I'll be announcing, placed in the top 10 in the world in their respective events. These students started working in August, some of them even during the summer, on these projects, and have continued to work with local businesses and with stakeholders throughout this community to create exemplary projects, and I'm excited to share those with you tonight. So, I want to start with Millie Doss and Rachael Desai. Come on down. (applause). They worked with the Quirky Feather to create a promotional plan for the local company. Mitch Jensen and Charlie Peritech. (applause). Did the business growth plan for Charlie's company, and were able to create a plan for improving sales for his existing company. Hannah Coslow and Victoria Lentz got 7th in the world. (applause). And they were in the Hospitality Team Decision-Making Role Play Event. Great job. Jamie and Joseph Mendoza, come on down. (applause). This sibling team placed 6th in the world in the Hospitality and Tourism Operations Research Event for the work that they did with Connor Prairie, creating a new promotional plan for Connor Prairie. Good job, guys. (applause). Chase Scanlon, Liam Swain, and Sebby Thatcher. These gentlemen put in a lot of hard work and placed 6th in the world for their Operations Research Project for Noble of Indiana, a non-for-profit organization. They were able to help create a promotional plan on a shoestring budget to meet that non-for-profits' needs. Great job, guys. Mitchell Edzima, Adam Gosmalski, and Jackson Holfordi. These gentlemen placed 5th in the world for their community service project called the Catalyst Campaign, in which they used the resources of Carmel DECA to serve and help other service organizations achieve their community service goals. So, great job, gentlemen. Good work. Meredith Black and Delaney Tejek. These ladies were 5th in the world for the Buying and Merchandising Operations Research Event, in which they did research and created a promotional plan for our very own Carmel Cafe. Great job, ladies. Will Carlson, John Hokinson, Nick Schaefer, and Colin Donahue. Represented by Nick Schaefer. They worked with the Ritz-Charles and also did an Operations Research Event in Hospitality, created a promotional plan for Ritz-Charles. Great job, Nick. (applause). Meredith Paul. Meredith Paul placed 4th in the world for Professional Selling and Hospitality, our first-ever top 10 in a Professional Selling Event. (applause). 2nd in the world for the Financial Literacy Promotion Event, in which they worked with local elementaries and some of the local middle schools to promote financial literacy in our community. Riley Dean, Sidney Glazier, and Claire Hager. Come on down. (applause). And we have two world champion groups to recognize tonight. The first is Trevor Davis and Bryce Duncan. These gentlemen came up with an idea to create a new business called Power Go that works with Tesla, created a 30-page business plan, complete with financials, to go along with it. Great job, guys. And last but not least, world champion in the Creative Marketing Project. These two created the Embrace Campaign, and you might have seen it on the news with the moment of intentional community where they got all eight teams in the mix to wear orange on one night and as a statement of promoting racial unity and political unity in a time of division. And that's Jack Siegel and Catherine Scott. Come on down. (applause).
Got them all there.
Bunch them up.
(inaudible). Her sister produced the radio show last year. (inaudible). (inaudible). That's your dad.
Okay. Mr. Jim Streisler, would you come to the podium? We're going to recognize excellence in journalism in the highlight at Carmel High School.
Thank you, Dr. Wall, and thank you to the school board for allowing me the privilege to recognize the accomplishments of this year's Carmel High School Highlight and Acumen News Magazine staffs. And the accomplishments, as you'll see, have been impressive. To begin, this year, the highlight staff earned its 8th consecutive Indiana High School Press Association Hoosier Star, and its 12th award since 2002. The Hoosier Star is our brand of a state championship. The staff also earned its 8th consecutive Columbia Scholastic Press Association Crown Award, its 16th crown since 1994. The print staff was also one of 17 national winners in the National Scholastic Press Association Pacemaker Award Competition. Pacemaker is often called the Pulitzer Prize of scholastic journalism, and this was the highlight's 5th consecutive win. Not to be outdone, the highlight website was one of only eight large school websites in the country to earn an NSPA Online Pacemaker this past spring, its 8th since the award's inception in 1997. Individually, the highlight staff saw 11 winners in this year's Quill and Scroll Writing, Photo, and Multimedia Contest, and another 11 in the IHSPA Harvey Competition. In the annual Women's Press Club Contest of Indiana Contest, highlight students placed in 12 of the 13 categories for which they were eligible, and managed to sweep two of those categories, with three students going on to win recognition in the national competition. But those accomplishments are only part of the story. Behind each of those successes is a team of amazing students. Our principal, John Williams, who is in the back of the room, will retire this year after 14 years of service at Carmel High School, and he's fond of this saying, and I'm paraphrasing a bit, but it is this, "It's not about what you do, it's about who you choose to go through it with." I believe in that sentiment with all my heart, and I couldn't imagine going through this year with a better group of people. See, those accomplishments I mentioned are only part of the story. Sure, they're impressive, and they add to a long list of impressive accomplishments for the highlight staffs over the years, but each year is different. Each team is different. The women's swimming team that won the 30th state championship is a different team from the team that won the 1st or even the 29th. So, for this team, these numbers, these accomplishments are theirs and theirs alone. And so, as their advisor, it is with great pride that I recognize the student leaders of the highlight and acumen staffs who are here tonight to accept your congratulations on behalf of that entire team. We'll start with our managing editors. We have Aseem Dungana, who will be attending Johns Hopkins University in the fall. Katie Long will be attending Columbia University in the fall. I didn't see him, but Shiva Valabaneeni will be attending Purdue University this fall. Melissa Yap will be going to Cornell. Jenny Zhao will be going to Indiana University. Our Acumen Editor-in-Chief, Selena Chen, will be attending Duke University this fall. And finally, the highlight editor-in-chief, Grace Zhang, will be attending Case Western Reserve in the fall. (applause). Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Brooke Watkins to the podium, please, Assistant Principal for Carmel High School. We recognize the American Association of Teachers German Study Trip Award. Brooke, thanks for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It is with pleasure tonight that I recognize a couple students in our German program. Nikhil Raguraman, and if you're here, will you come forward? And I'll share a little bit about the honor that Nikhil has won. He's won the American Association of Teachers of German Study Award Trip. To qualify for this, he had to, he ranked 90th percentile on the AATG National Exam. He applied for and competed against other 90th percentile students in Indiana and was selected as the Indiana representative. From there, he was placed in a pool with 51 other candidates from across the country. There were originally 20,000 test takers in this pool, which was narrowed down to 30 to 35 students that were selected from that 20,000. And he has won an all-expenses-paid trip to Germany for approximately a month this summer, where he will live in a German home, attend classes, and participate in a variety of excursions, both cultural and historical. So, please join me in recognizing Nikhil on his honor. The other student I have the honor recognizing tonight is Sarah Beate. If she wants to come forward, please. And Sarah has won the Congress Buddhistang Exchange Scholarship. Sarah's been taking German since she was in 6th grade. Last year, she participated in the IU Honors Program and spent seven weeks in Austria. This year, because of her packed schedule, she wasn't able to take German class, so instead, she took an AP German class online. And she's also a senior teacher assistant in one of our German Level 1 students with Frau Becker. And I have to also say, she played a significant role in behind-the-scenes and Phantom of the Opera, if you had a chance to see that recently. So, she's quite busy, and she's very good at what she does. As a result, she won the scholarship, and it's an exchange sponsored by the U.S. Congress and the German equivalent, where she will participate in a vocational program and have the opportunity to take classes and participate in a number of internships while she is in Germany. The program is competitive, and only 25 students nationwide are selected to participate in this program. So, please join me in recognizing Sarah. (applause). Congratulations. And I also just wanted to add just a thank you to Angelica Becker and Laura King, who are the German teachers, for creating- are the German teachers, for creating such a strong program and their dedication so that these students have these opportunities. So thank you for that.
I'd like to invite John Williams to the podium. We recognize the U.S. Presidential Scholar Award. John?
Thank you, Dr. Wall and the board, and just a couple things. First of all, I hope that you guys were listening to the information that was going out about these kids. I mean, sometimes that all gets caught up in the clapping, but it's an amazing thing. I think another thing to point out, and I've said this before up here, but I want to take this opportunity, is, you know, these kids oftentimes reach these accolades while they're Carmel High School students, but these are really district awards and recognitions. These kids are the result of really a K-12 education that's second to none. So I hope that every elementary person and ESC staff is just as proud of what these kids accomplished, because it's really a team effort here at Carmel Clay Schools. But it's pretty neat to be at Carmel High School when all that stuff goes on. I'm here tonight to introduce to you a Presidential Scholar. The United States Presidential Scholar Program was established in 1964 to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished high school seniors. Each year, 4,000 candidates are invited to apply for recognition as a U.S. Presidential Scholar. The application includes essays and self-assessments, as well as secondary school reports and transcripts. Candidates are evaluated on their academic achievement, personal characteristics, leadership, and service activities, and the quality and content of their essay. Each year, one male and one female from each state are named as U.S. Presidential Scholars. Being named a U.S. Presidential Scholar is one of the highest honors for high school students. All U.S. Presidential Scholars are honored for their accomplishments during the National Recognition Program held in June in Washington, DC. During this expense-paid trip, scholars meet with government officials and high-level educators to commemorate their achievements. Scholars are awarded the Presidential Scholar's Medallion at a ceremony sponsored by the White House. It is my great pleasure to share that Carmel High School has the distinction of having one of our current seniors named as Indiana's Male 1917 U.S. State Presidential Scholar. This student excels in all areas of his life, and he has received a full tuition Army RLT Scholarship to attend Princeton University next fall, where I'm certain he'll continue to grow and make significant contributions both inside and outside the classroom. And I'm most pleased to introduce to you Michael Wang, the United States Presidential Scholar. I'm going to say just a couple of other things about Michael. You guys have met Michael before. He's been up here more times than I have, I think. Michael, you met Michael last year when he was named the Indiana AP Scholar, which is given, a distinction given to one male and one female in the state of Indiana who's earned the most, taken the most AP classes and scored the highest. And Michael has taken 18 AP courses during his time at Carmel High School, scoring a five on all of his AP exams. Then you met Michael when he came back after taking the Macroeconomics AP exam. Not only did he score a five, he scored a perfect score. I mean, only 45 people in the world who took that exam scored a perfect score. So Michael is a very, very bright young man. He also has excelled as Indiana Academic All-Star representing Carmel High School. He's an athlete at Carmel High School. He's involved in many of our clubs. I asked him to give me some stuff, and I couldn't carry it here today on what he's been involved in. Michael has certainly distinguished himself, and we're very proud of him at Carmel High School.
Thank you, John. Brittany Weisman to the podium, please. We're going to recognize Indiana's 2017 Family and Consumer Sciences Teacher of the Year. Brittany?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to have Nancy Spencer come up with me as well, please. I'm just very thrilled and honored that we have this opportunity to honor Nancy Spencer. She's a Family and Consumer Science Department Chair at Carmel High School, and she was selected as the American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Indiana Affiliate Family and Consumer Science Teacher of the Year. This prestigious award was established to recognize exemplary teachers who utilize cutting-edge methods and techniques to provide stimulus and visibility to family consumer science education. So we're really appreciative of Carmel Clay Schools for supporting our CTE programs, especially family consumer sciences. And Nancy really has established a strong program. She continues a wonderful legacy at Carmel High School of Family and Consumer Science. Her nomination was submitted by her peers and students as well, and they referenced her tremendous leadership and support that she's provided to both students and colleagues through innovative programs and her active participation in FCCLA, which is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, over the past seven years. In addition to this honor, Nancy was recently elected the Indiana President of the American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences, and she'll also continue to serve on the Family and Consumer Science State Advisory Board. Let's give a round of applause to Nancy Spencer.
I'd like to invite to the podium Barb Danquist and Stephanie McDonald, co-executive directors of the Carmel Education Foundation, to present the Spring Grant Recipient.
Good evening. Stephanie McDonald and I are the co-executive directors of the Carmel Education Foundation, and we are very fortunate to have Jan Byers as the Chair of our Grant Committee. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing the 2017 Spring Grant recipients from our Carmel Clay Schools who have entered in such outstanding ideas that it was very difficult for the committee to select. Jan is going to be introducing them each to you, and please come on up when you hear your name and stand in front of the dais there. But if they're not here, please collect the ones for the people that are not. Jan Byers.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we are going to have approximately 16 groups who are going to be recognized, and the amount of money that we awarded for this was $16,530.62 for regular grants and another grant for $1,000. So we really appreciate the time that it takes for all of these people to write the grants, and we would encourage other teachers as well to come forward with exciting ideas, innovative ideas, because we love to award the money. All right, so starting out, the name, this is from Mohawk Trails, and our teachers are Beth Anderson, Lexi Ripple, and Principal Kate Fagan. Project name: Wiggle While You Work. This is all about flexible seating. Next, from Cherry Tree Elementary, Heidi Brinkman, Chris Atkinson, and Principal Stacy Smith. Focus While You Wiggle. Again, flexible seating. Next, Forest Dale Elementary, Natalie Deitch, Laura Chen, and Principal Deanna Pittman for flexible seating for the library. Next, from Prairie Trace Elementary, Courtney Davis, Sarah Harding, Elizabeth Peasley, Shan Rohr, Alyssa Swart, and Principal Jill Ship. This is problem-solving and skill-building with Osmo. Next, from Clay Middle School, Steffi McCourt, Dan Poutine, and Principal Todd Crosby, A Long Walk to Justice. Next, from Creekside Middle School, Angela Miller, Laura Johnson, Katie Thomas, Rebecca Drayman, Lindsay Dorte, and Principal Tom Harmus. This is a sensory studio. Next, from Carmel High School, Nancy Spencer, Sonia Brown, Lila Torp, Brenda Lester, Jessica Baumann, Principal John Williams. This is from the Culinary and Pastry Arts Department, and I will say, I've certainly tasted some of these wonderful pastries in the past. Thank you. Next, from Prairie Trace, Holly Ventrees, Lauren Burke, Holly Davison, Amanda Dillon, Principal Jill Ship. Differential Math. Next, from Clay Middle School, Chris Kleeman, Jeff Carter, Principal Todd Crosby, Ping-Pong Wellness Club. Going to see some ping pong going on in this school. Next, from Orchard Park, Kelly Sharkey, Adrian Batson, and Principal Rhonda Turner, Structured Work Systems. From Smoky Row, Stacy Summers, Patse Shell, Renee Salvio, Melissa Rascaliwak, sorry, Kim Barnett is the principal. This is flexible seating to optimize student achievement. From Clay Middle School, Anastasia Gaminow, Leanna Giles, Eli Moffett, and Principal Todd Crosby. This is nonfiction accessible text. Next, from Creekside Middle School, Angela Miller. This is The Button Factory, and Tom Harmus is principal. Thank you. From Creekside Middle School, Jennifer Carson, Tom Harmus, Thinking on Your Feet. From Woodbrook Elementary, Laura Muse, Kelly Davis, Principal, Flexible Seating. Going on. From Town Meadow Elementary, Josie McKay, Principal Tom Fears, Teaching Literacy Through Different Perspectives. Carmel Middle, Rebecca McKellahan, Chris Derben, and Principal is Lisa J., The Midwest Clinic Convention, Sending Some People For A Clinic For Music. We are very grateful that these people are here, that they responded to us, and hopefully you will see the benefit with your children and with all that they are producing here. Wonderful, wonderful opportunities here for all of the students. We'd like to encourage to participate in the next round. All of those applications are going to be due by September the 22nd, where we'll be awarding even more money. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Okay, we have our district spotlight on excellence this evening. I'd like to invite Lila J., Principal Carmel Middle School, to the podium. We're going to recognize the 71st Annual Midwest International Band and Orchestra Clinic Performance from Carmel Middle School. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. It's such an incredible evening of so many recognitions, and I'm happy to be a part of that. We have such incredible support for our performing arts across the district, and certainly thank you to our board tonight. Mr. Powell, Mr. Joel Powell, is our orchestra director, and he unfortunately could not be here tonight. He is actually meeting with the parent group that will be attending the Midwest Clinic, their students will be attending the Midwest Clinic. So I'm happy to be here to speak a little bit about the Midwest Clinic and the accomplishment of our students, for sure. But first, a little bit about Mr. Powell. He joined our staff early in the fall last year. He was on a late start to the school year, and we were just really anxious to get him. When he started, he just hit the ground running and really hasn't stopped since. He is a very, very accomplished teacher and incredible performer, but I think more than anything, he's just an awesome person, and I think our students would definitely attest to that. He is so fun to be around, and you can just sense his passion and enthusiasm for what he does in any interaction that you have with him. He, in his time with us, has started what we now recognize as our Chamber Orchestra. It's a group of students that's multiple grade levels, who have to go through a tryout process to be a part of the group. It is not a class that meets, and so they are meeting outside of the school day, rehearsing and preparing, but they do ultimately perform at our concerts with our student groups that do rehearse during the day. So just a lot of work that our students put into this Chamber Orchestra. And in addition to performing in their seventh and eighth grade orchestras, then they are also playing for the Chamber Orchestra, which I think is important to note, that the students are participating in multiple groups. And most recently, they performed at our spring concert, and I will say, I did take this video, so it's probably not the best picture, but it's definitely, we'll give you a little picture about. so beautiful. So you might have seen a little shaking in there when I took a breath. But tonight, we're talking a little bit about what they're, one of the greatest accomplishments that they just recently earned and worked so very hard for. Our Chamber Orchestra was recently selected to perform at the Midwest Clinic, which is an international band and orchestra clinic that's held in Chicago annually. It is considered the highest honor to be selected to perform at the clinic, and they are often up against, well, they are up against groups from all 50 states at the collegiate high school and middle school level. So to be selected for this, they were being selected above collegiate-level groups to perform at this, which I think is really incredible for a middle school. There's a very rigorous application process that goes, that the students had to participate in, including video auditions and some other things. And as I said, there's just a lot of work that goes into the process, and for them to be selected is truly the highest honor. The trip is a three-day trip, and then the culminating piece is a performance by our students that will be attended by thousands of clinic goers. So, going from a 600-seat auditorium at Carmel Middle School to performing in front of thousands of performers themselves is just so awesome. It's going to be such a great experience. The other thing that I think is important to note is, as a part of this experience, our students are going to be exposed to composers that they may not otherwise have the opportunity to perform their pieces. Often, composers from all over the world will create pieces for these groups to perform at the clinic. So they, you know, I kind of look at it, or I think about it as a dress that is designed for an awards show. Our kids are performing pieces that are designed to be played and previewed at an event such as this one, that ultimately, they will set the playing standard for that piece in the future, and I just think that that is really, really cool. So anyway, we do have a couple of students here that I wanted to recognize. Mr. Powell asked some of our principal players, which means that they are the top performing players in the group, to be here tonight, and I'm not sure that all of them were here. It was so crowded. But Grace Barney, Nathan Zhang, Max Chang, Annie Kim, Maya Elshaw, and James Zhang. They represent the top performers. So congratulations to them and our entire Chamber Orchestra, but we're really excited about it and can't wait to represent Carmel Clay Schools at the Midwest Clinic.
Seeing that we have no public participation, we'll move straight to consent. Now, we're going to take a brief recess, so there's an opportunity. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent? I know there's a number of artists who want to get a picture with their picture, so we're
So move.
Second?
Second.
going to break for about five minutes and allow that to happen, and then we'll reconvene. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have action. Now, we're going to take a brief recess, so there's an opportunity. I know there's a number of artists who want to get a picture with their picture, so we're going to break for about five minutes and allow that to happen, and then we'll reconvene. For that, we have math material adoption. To that, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. This evening, I bring back to you the materials recommended by the Math Materials Adoption Committee to be used in the, beginning in the 2017 school year for the next six years.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the adoption recommend, math material adoption recommendation from Dr. Dudley?
Second.
Motion? Motion?
Motion.
Discussion. Amy, I have one question for you. Since we're doing a pretty significant adoption, what do we do with those old books? And do students have an opportunity to purchase or keep, or do they, what happens to them?
For the old materials, what we do is, we look to either have textbook companies that want to buy them back, so buy them back as used books. If that's not the case, then we look at recycling the materials as well.
Thank you. Pam?
I'm just wondering, what is the focus on math facts in these, in the elementary edition? Because I know we had to supplement.
Correct. Correct. In our previous adoption for Everyday Math III, we did have a supplement, Otter Creek Math. As the committee looked at the materials for Everyday Math IV, which is a, it has a lot of changes in it, they have addressed that. So what the committee determined to do was to use the new materials for a year, and then if they do need to do an additional supplement, to revisit that next year after looking at using those materials, because there are a lot of changes that Everyday Math did address. And so they wanted to make sure that they were using those materials.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Any other questions? All in favor of supporting math adoption materials? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And moving right along, discussion. Looks like we've got school lunch prices, so that, I know we'll turn to... Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. Let me get caught up here.
Thank you. We are recommending an increase of five cents for the elementary and secondary lunch prices. This does not include an increase for breakfast or the adults. We increased the adult price 10 cents last year. Under the Healthy Hungry, Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, we're really required to increase our lunch prices by a minimum of 5%. Currently, there's a, the intent of the federal government is, is that whatever the local school district is charging, they're wanting to bring that together with what the federal reimbursement is. Because essentially, what's happening is the federal government's paying more money for reimbursed lunch than what we're charging. And so, a number of years ago, they took the position that they wanted to close that gap, thus the requirement to increase. Now, on the positive side, we do make good use of the additional funds that we receive. We continue to try to provide more fresh fruits and vegetables and so forth, and we're doing some more scratch cooking. So, we do, we do make good use of the additional money.
Thank you, Roger. I open it up to questions.
I have a question, and I should have sent this in advance. I actually just kind of thought about it. Is there a timeframe with which we have to meet? It says we need to increase by five cents annually at a minimum.
No, there's not a date specific. It's working kind of toward that goal.
Okay.
And as long as we have, they look at our cash balance in the Food Service Fund and, which is why we have to get a waiver, or not, or permission basically, to increase it only five cents. Because based on the kind of meals that we're providing and the solid financial position we're in, they're, otherwise, they would require us to raise it more.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much, Roger. And next, Dr. Dudley?
Thanks. The, as you may recall, a couple of years ago, we added two courses, two capstone courses, our AP Capstone, which consisted of AP Seminar and AP Resource, Research Course. And we adopted some materials that were consumable materials, but as we learned more and we had more training through AP, we had a committee convene that really looked at those materials, and they are recommending two different consumable materials to better meet the needs of the students in both of these courses. And so, these are the recommended materials from this committee.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Questions from the board? Yes, Pam?
I just want to make a comment that it's nice to see us constantly working to improve on what we already are doing well. So, to know that our committees are always looking at ways to enhance our curriculum, I think that's wonderful.
Good point, Pam. Any other questions? Great. Well, we look forward to bringing this back at our next meeting. Thank you. And next, we have, sorry, my computer's just working a little more slowly today if we have our monthly financial update. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. As we present now through the month of April, you see our cash balance went up from 6.9 to 7.6 million last month. We had three payrolls that month, which is what brought it down. You'll notice that by next month, we should start getting some early withdrawals on our local property tax from the referendum, and so that will begin, our cash balance will begin to go up as that occurs, and will continue so as we get through the first six months of this year. But we're very, we're really right on where we would expect to be at this time of the year.
Thank you, Roger. Comments from the board? Any questions? We do appreciate that you have been bringing these to us.
Thank you.
Gosh, well over a year now, trying to keep us updated, so we were really aware of the financial situation we were in, and it certainly helped us in sharing the news and the need of a referendum.
Yes.
And I know we're going to be speaking to that in a few minutes, so thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Wall.
Thank you. Hard to believe we haven't met since we had successful referendum. It seems kind of a long time ago.
It does.
But...
It was a big run.
Yeah. But it's, as I said previous, it's such a positive affirmation for kids, for our school community, and everything we stand for at Carmel Clay Schools, and it's going to allow for us to continue to do what we do best. Teaching and learning at its highest level. Dedicated teachers, committed to improving their craft. Students that are expecting, you know, high expectations for them and challenges, but by the same token, associate a very comfortable social-emotional learning environment so they can take risks without fear. I mean, that's so important for our kids and our classroom. And our parents, our parents showed up, and we thank them for that. And our community showed up, and will continue to be a model for the rest of the state on success in public schools. So, I just wanted to say those few words and thank the board and congratulate the board on a very successful referendum. And at the next meeting, we'll recognize the PAC chairs for their tireless contributions to the success of the referendum as well, so we'll bring them back in June. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wall. We are very much indebted to all of your efforts, you and your team. I know Amy and Roger, and we were very limited on who could advocate for the referendum, and that being the case, the three of you worked tirelessly for quite a few months, and I hope you're going to rest, because you absolutely need it. You absolutely deserve it, and we are very fortunate that we have, we had the PAC and we had advocates such as yourself that really went out there and shared our message. And we are so thankful and fortunate that we have a community that really supports public education. So, we're excited, excited about our future, so thank you. And with future and learning and all of this fun, exciting things, board members have a number of reports that we're going to be giving tonight about the National School Board Association meeting. We feel very fortunate that we have the opportunity and had the opportunity to attend. I know we continue to go, we have professional development through our state school board association. We can receive some at a national level, which we try very hard to get to annually. And I know one of our bylaws is that we're going to share this information publicly so others learn what we have learned, as well as our fellow board members. So, with that, who would like to begin? Sure, Katie.
This year's theme for the National School Board Association was Reach, Elevate, and Inspire, and I love that one of the great parts about going and the opportunity is to meet with board members from across the nation, from school districts with 1,000 students to school districts with tens of thousands of students, and it's so great to share the challenges and the triumphs that each of those have, and also to realize how fortunate we are in Carmel for the things that, you know, we have to work with and the students and families that we have. These are some, these are the sessions that I attended. I'm not going to go through all of them. I kind of picked out a few of them, but as I was putting this together, I noticed that a common thread was communication. Subliminally, I chose topics that had to do with communicating, not only as a board, but with our community. So that was kind of ironic when I was going through here and looking. One of the ones I went to that I loved is called Tech Trends, Tools, and Strategies, and it was presented by the Arizona School Board Association. In the past 25 years, our entire culture has changed in terms of technology. We no longer keep things and use paper as a means for communication. Breaking news usually reaches people on social media before news stations. You don't watch Walter Cronkite on the nightly news anymore, usually. The top platforms are Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, Pinterest, and LinkedIn, and below, you'll see the ages for that. By seeing that they go to different audiences as a school district, we need to realize that we need, in order to reach the most people, we have to utilize these different platforms and to be prepared for those different things. The, one of the biggest things they talked about was mobile. Most people use their devices to access media instead of a traditional computer or laptop. So, we need to make sure that we, our programming and website needs to be mobile-friendly so that people can access that easily.
school community, and everything we stand for at Carmel Clay Schools. And it's going to allow for us to continue to do what we do best, teaching and learning at its highest level. Dedicated teachers, committed to improving their craft, students that are expecting, you know, high expectations for them and challenges, but by the same token, associate a very comfortable social-emotional learning environment so they can take risks without fear. I mean, that's so important for our kids and our classroom. And our parents, our parents showed up, and we thank them for that. And our community showed up, and will continue to be a model for the rest of the state on success in public schools. So, I just wanted to say those few words and thank the board and congratulate the board on a very successful referendum. And at the next meeting, we'll recognize the PAC chairs for their tireless contributions to the success of the referendum as well. So, we'll bring them back in June. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wall. We are very much indebted to all of your efforts, you and your team. I know Amy and Roger, and we were very limited on who could advocate for the referendum. And that being the case, the three of you worked tirelessly for quite a few months, and I hope you're going to rest. Because you absolutely need it. You absolutely deserve it, and we are very fortunate that we have, we had the PAC, and we had advocates such as yourself that really went out there and shared our message. And we are so thankful and fortunate that we have a community that really supports public education. So, we're excited, excited about our future, so thank you. And with future and learning and all of this fun, exciting things, board members have a number of reports that we're going to be giving tonight about the National School Board Association meeting. We feel very fortunate that we have the opportunity and had the opportunity to attend. I know we continue to go, we have professional development through our state school board association. We can receive some at a national level, which we try very hard to get to annually. And I know one of our bylaws is that we're going to share this information publicly so others learn what we have learned, as well as our fellow board members. So, with that, who would like to begin? Sure, Katie.
This year's theme for the National School Board Association was Reach, Elevate, and Inspire. And I love that one of the great parts about going and the opportunity is to meet with board members from across the nation, from school districts with 1,000 students to school districts with tens of thousands of students. And it's so great to share the challenges and the triumphs that each of those have, and also to realize how fortunate we are in Carmel for the things that, you know, we have to work with and the students and families that we have. These are some, these are the sessions that I attended. I'm not going to go through all of them. I've kind of picked out a few of them, but as I was putting this together, I noticed that a common thread was communication. Subliminally, I chose topics that had to do with communicating, not only as a board, but with our community. So, that was kind of ironic when I was going through here and looking. One of the ones I went to that I loved is called Tech Trends, Tools, and Strategies, and was presented by the Arizona School Board Association. In the past 25 years, our entire culture has changed in terms of technology. We no longer keep things and use paper as a means for communication. Breaking news usually reaches people on social media before news stations. You don't watch Walter Cronkite on the nightly news anymore, usually. The top platforms are Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, Pinterest, and LinkedIn, and below, you'll see the ages for that. By seeing that they go to different audiences as a school district, we need to realize that we need, in order to reach the most people, we have to utilize these different platforms and to be prepared for those different things. One of the biggest things they talked about was mobile. Most people use their devices to access media instead of a traditional computer or laptop. So, we need to make sure that we, our programming and website needs to be mobile-friendly so that people can access that easily, and they don't have to try to minimize or maximize their screen. Another thing that they're finding that this presentation talked about is communication responses. Seventy percent of people want a response in less than one hour when posting on a Twitter site or Facebook page. In the past year, people have complained 850 million times on social media directly to their brands. You'll see things in the news about how someone's in a flight that's delayed, and they're talking to American Airlines, and American Airlines is talking back to them. This in no way means that we're American Airlines, but it does mean that this is something that's happening, and that how, as a board, we need to have internal and administrative policies on how we want to deal with communication. How do we deal with people who post on our social media sites? And how do we deal with facts versus opinions? So, that was just something they brought up as something to be aware of for the future. Another one that I went to that I loved was what the public wants from our schools and how to use poll results to advocate. This is an industry-standard poll that works with Gallup to ask, allows educators and policymakers to see what the public opinion is on public schools. Fewer than half Americans view academics as the main goal for going to school. The rest is split between preparing for work and being good citizens, and what does that necessarily mean? You know, sometimes people say that, but you know, how are we trying to understand what they're asking for? One of the things they talked about is, does the public understand our standards? When we say we have standards, does the public know what we're talking about? This is a fractions page from 1920 in fourth grade arithmetic. So, this is how they would do math problems. This is from Everyday Math, published in 2002. It's the same overreaching goal, is to understand fractions, but it's presented much differently. Does the public understand these differences? And is our job to communicate? One of the things that they talk about is how people trust teachers. And one of the things that I think we do great is our workshop sessions, where we will bring in educators, and they will teach us, which in turns teaches the public on the things that we do. Another point they brought up is that people usually grade their own child's school better than the nation's public school. So, you'll see the grades that they gave. And I find this so true. The greater the communication is between the school has, the better the grade the parent will give that school. Satisfaction increased when they were able to visit, have lunch with their child, be able to volunteer in their schools. As a parent myself, I know that's one thing that I'm very thankful for that I'm able to do. If people are able to see what's inside a classroom, then they're more likely to agree that it's going great. Another one I went to was why community conversation should matter, and it talked about, if we don't go through hard things, we're not going to learn, and how we have to realize our own bias, good or bad. We all have things that we preconceive notions about things. And there's fear in asking people what they want. I love that in the past that we've done stakeholder sessions, and we've been very good about asking the public and have committees for calendars and things of that nature, and that's a very strong indicator of a successful school district. And that school board members are policymakers, and that we need to remember that what we're doing for whom and what cost, and that goes right into our mission statement and our, the goals that we have and how we keep students centered. Just kind of some favorite things from things that I love. I heard be on the edge of frustration, it means you're going somewhere. It is so hard to be frustrated with things, but that's a good thing. If we're complacent, then we're never going to get anywhere. And we don't lack IQ, it's wisdom. We all know what needs to be done, but we don't do it. Leadership is based on tapping into that wisdom. We need to see the iceberg before it hits the Titanic and looking ahead of things. This fall, I saw that there was kindergarten screenings recently. We're welcoming the class of 2030. It sounds far away, but it's, for those working in education, it's here today, and how we need to be prepared for the future today because we have it. It's in our little hands. And every one of our kids, regardless of where they come from, need to know that when they walk into our schools, they walk into a place of love. We welcome them all, we fight for them. Every single one of our children deserves a chance to discover their own personal greatness. We don't pick winners or losers, we make them all winners. And I feel as a district that that is something that we believe in, that we strive to do, and I know, and I hope that we'll continue to do so. Thanks.
All right, I'm going to follow that fancy, great PowerPoint with just a few notes on the sessions I attended and what I brought home. One of the interesting things I took from the conference is, you never know where you're going to find information. And on the plane ride out there, Katie and I were sitting next to a gentleman, and in the last five minutes of the plane ride, we found out that he's from Indianapolis, obviously, was on the plane, but he works for FFA, which is what's formerly referred to as Future Farmers of America. But they specifically don't use that name because their goal today is student achievement through agricultural education. And just in that five-minute conversation, he really piqued a personal interest in what that means and how that could potentially be brought to Carmel, from ideas from, now I can't think of what they're called. Drones, using drones, using chemicals. And I guess their name really, their decision to change their name really implies that it's not just for kids in the field, it's not just for livestock shows. And I've got a list of three different things that I've taken from the conference that I'm going to make Dr. Wall have breakfast with me and share that information with him. So, that's number one. Then on Saturday, the general session speaker was astronaut Scott Kelly, who spent a year in space, and while he was probably the least of the education speakers, he just provided an interesting insight, and I'm always amazed when we go to these conferences, what they present at the general session and what we can take home, from great speakers like him to the music that is always part of that show. And they bring in from across the country, different groups from high schools, and at some point, that'd be a great achievement for some of the Carmel Performing Arts to be invited to that. Then the other sessions I attended on that day, on Saturday, were securing the campus in seconds with One Touch Response, which is a system that uses cell phones to get information out quicker to students, teachers, and the community about events happening, really, weather and other potential-related problems at school. One of the other sessions that day was, our board made a presentation on why learning school boards come to the National School Board Association Conference. So, that was a great experience to be on the other side and share all the things that really the boards before us brought back from the conference that we now use today, starting with, including but not limited expedition. I also attended a session on school board members and the First Amendment, which really dealt with what your rights are as a school board and how they, as a school board member, and how they might be limited in that role compared to just an average person, and what the First Amendment means to that. Sunday's general session speaker was Arianna Huffington. I think Katie shared a great quote from her. She was just an amazing speaker and shared lots of things. Also from the opening session was the Magna Award winners, and I queued in on one of them, that was called Shop at USC, which is a program for special-needs children. USC, I believe, is an abbreviation for the school district, and that's something that might be, I think, a great use for Carmel students. I also attended a session called Digital Megaphone, which was similar to some of Katie's, about use of social media, and was able to share that presentation with our PAC co-chairs before, that they were able to hopefully use some of that stuff for their work. Another legal one I attended was balancing legal obligations to privacy with media and public records requests. And another social media one, obviously, kind of a theme of what's going on, is trending in the wrong direction on Facebook, which, that was a presentation about how a school had mistakenly been labeled as an employee saying something that they didn't say, and how the repercussions that they had to deal with on that. So, and then I had to leave early on Sunday to get back on Monday, so I missed some of the sessions, but again, I'd like to thank the district for sending us. I think it's a valuable way for us to see really what's happening in school districts across the country. And I'm going to get on Dr. Wall's calendar. We're going to have breakfast for these three things that I think we need to hopefully put Carmel's own twist on, what's something else, I know we owe somebody else's at least started for us.
Thank you. Yes, I want to reiterate that I'm very thankful that we were able to attend this school conference, the school board conference, and learned a lot by conversations with other board members. It's very interesting to hear the different dynamics that go on in the boardroom, and how many boards run from nine members to five members. So, it's very interesting to hear from all these people. I was able to attend a pre-conference session on Friday, was called From the Boardroom to the Classroom: Equity Starts at the Top. It was very interesting because it was talking about equity with students. How do we change attitudes towards our children? We may not always do what is popular, but what is right. Don't ignore wrongdoing. It talked about needing an equity policy in place in the school system. Educational project, teaching disparity exists in the classrooms, bigotry of low expectations, that can be a big problem if you expect, if you don't expect your children to achieve, they won't. So, this is equity, and they were talking about the minority students, and how we don't expect minority students, some of them to perform, as well as white students. So, it was a very interesting conversation. Then I attended the general session. NSBA has started a campaign called the Refresh Campaign, and they have a video to show how students are thriving in our schools every day, and they have a website, Stand Up For the Number Four Public Schools. So, if you have an opportunity to visit that and see what NSBA has out there, it's very interesting. And Captain Scott Kelly, he, it was interesting to hear that he decided to be an astronaut after reading the book, The Right Stuff. And then, his quote was, that I wrote down, "If we can dream it, we can do it. Teamwork makes the dream work." So, I think that's really cool. The next session I went to was Educating for an Uncertain World. Since we don't know what our world's going to be like in the future and where we're going with our world, that was kind of an interesting topic to go to. It said, "Don't throw out everything to make way for the new. Reuse, recycle, and repurpose." And I think that's really good because in this day and age, because there's so many things coming at us, so much technology and so many new tools to learn, that we tend to grab at what's out there really quickly and not, and then throw out what we're currently doing. So, and I have seen that happen. "School is a place a student can fall in love with things and ideas and subjects." So, I think that was neat, too. "Stop doing things in schools like we've always done, like science fairs." I thought that was, okay. And it said, "Excellence in schools cannot happen without equity." Another session I went to was about your rights, school board members and the First Amendment, and just to remember that the First Amendment does not always protect you from the consequences of your action. Then I went to one called The Power of One, and was talking about the whole child. Make sure you listen to the whole child, social emotional learning. Then this person mentioned Singapore, even though everybody's being matched to what Singapore's doing, everybody says, you know, Singapore is way up there. He was referring to the fact that Singapore is creating robots, and there's not much to them. And so, you know, look at the United States and try to do something about what's important in the United States. Humor is important. And also said, "Do depression screening along with bullying and mental health." And I thought that was an interesting statement. Then we have, "Dealing with mavericks, malcontents, and mutineers." That was a good one. "Strategies to Keep You Sane. Stop, stop letting people push your buttons, control you. Communicate, listen, use your ears, seek to understand, want to be heard, don't show them your back, and take no action. Curiosity, understand where they are. All people have something to contribute. Breathe. Voice breathing, fast, high and fast, upping your stress level." So, don't do that. Principles, what is important to you, and attitude. So, those were the strategies to keep you moving. Could have used those during the referendum campaign. Social-emotional learning was one of the last ones I went to because this is a big push in our district. And this person was saying that it's not a program, but it's a framework. You create a framework for the kids to do what they're doing. You empower the students, and it's all about equity. Give the students the tools to be present and ready to learn. It's a practice of being present in the moment, mindfulness. It's a self-regulation and self-awareness. There's a continuum. You have self-awareness, then you self-regulate, then you become socially aware, and then there's social harmony. So, there are those four things. And there was a thing that she used to cause us to stop. It was called POP. It's called Pause, Own It, and Practice. There you go. Pause. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. I do have a PowerPoint. I will be brief, and it is not nearly as fancy as Katie's, but I have a PowerPoint. And we'll see what happens. Okay. And do I just hit next?
Get it to...
What, this?
There you go.
Yeah, top.
All righty. Okay. So, I was just giving some basic information that we all had an opportunity to attend, and that this last, Mike already touched on it, this was the first time that our school board has ever presented at a national conference, and it was a really exciting opportunity to share some of the great things that we have learned and how we've been able to bring that back to our community and help our board grow, although I misspelled a word. We did have a great opportunity to listen to three general session speakers, which my board has already talked about, as well as, you know, the opportunity to go to so many different classes. Scott Kelly, something I took from him, similar to Pam. Teamwork makes the dream work. But what I really liked, taking small manageable steps to achieve extraordinary things. And it's a good idea to make constant corrections all the time, even if they're really small, because things will get better. I liked Arianna Huffington focused on success beginning the night before, and you really need to be well-rested to be successful and to thrive. Good leadership requires people to recharge. Fellow leaders, please recharge. And focus on your well-being. And Westmore, you know, every child deserves a chance to experience their own personal greatness. I think what struck me, and I mentioned to my children, students are one decision away from going in the wrong direction. They need a champion, and that's who we are as a school, as a school district, as teachers and administrators, helping our kids. Most of my learning really supported, like the rest of you, supported our strategic plan. I focused on social media, social-emotional learning, and then policy development and compliance. Big thing with social media, it was in multiple classes that I was in. We're always, and will always be, a school board member, so we need to keep in mind that everything we say and do and post reflects on our school district. I won't stay on these very long. Be sure that when we're posting, think about our open-door laws, our accessibility, or acceptable-use policies in our school district, and be concerned about what is confidential. They referenced, and had a number of pictures up of people taking pictures, and you actually have something that's confidential in your hand. So, they had mentioned that really, we need to consider our surroundings, who we're with, what we're holding, what we might happen to be wearing, what are we...
what we're holding, what we might happen to be wearing, what are we advertising on our shirt when we're taking pictures and reposting those on behalf of the school district. And respecting, of course, the privacy of our students and staff members. They are suggesting that at least early on, our posts should just be material that has already been posted by the school district. We, of course, should represent our school proudly, highlight the positive things that we're doing. And I know Katie does a great job of finding some really neat posts to share, tweet, and Facebook about. What I know we do not necessarily have is something internally for our school, for our board. So, I would suggest that we think about what strategies we might want to put in place for social media networking for the board and talk about that perhaps at our summer I did a few socio-emotional learning. I did go to one with Katie and Pam. It was by Carla Philibert. And it was the mindful minutes. And she was talking about, we cannot expect our students to walk into a classroom and start an exam if they're not focused and they're not present, just mindfully present. And so, she went through and had us work through a number of different mindful minute strategies. And those are listed here. Another one that Pam actually went to, and I went to because my other class was full, The Power of One School Program. And all three that I ended up going to for socio-emotional learning were actually programs that they can bring into a school district. We could certainly use some of that material and adapt that if we wanted to, we don't necessarily have to use the program itself. But this particular program from Steven Swirka focuses on Maslow's hierarchy as well as incorporating Daniel Goldman's ideas. And it was, it was really motivational. I really enjoyed it and I, there are ways that we can certainly excite our student and then use our community, which we have so many resources in our district to support. And what brought me, what I thought about what the socio-emotional learning is, our youth assistance program. You know, that's just one more avenue of supporting our students to be successful. The Christian Moore was a far different program that I went to. And this particular one, I felt like as soon as I walked in, he was selling his product, which he was. But it was, it was, it was interesting. It was all about building resilience. And most people, in fact, he says 30 to 40% of students lack resilience and they also lack the tools to try. And so, this particular program helps teach the strategies of resilience. I liked that he had pointed out resilience is a great equalizer. It transcends race, gender, culture, socioeconomic status, and literally other aspects of the He has 10 different fundamental strategies that are taught through the program and it is a year-long program. And we don't necessarily have to adopt these, but there are some other strategies. I went to actually three different classes from, that were provided with regards to the Office of Civil Rights. And I went primarily to see, are there things that we need to be doing differently? Do we need new policies? And just in general, for those who might be watching, the Office of Civil Rights is through the Department of Education and it does enforce the federal prohibition of discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, English language proficiency, which I was not aware, sex, disability, and age. And their guidance typically comes in the form of the Dear Colleague letters that we are to follow. And while they're not law, courts do give deference to these Dear Colleague letters. And most recent enforcement activities have been, oops, there we go, student disciplinary disparities, accommodations of transgender students, and most recently, the Glosader results were actually sent back. So, we really have no direction at this point in time. Web accessibility has been a very big one. So, as we continue to work on our updated website, that's something we'll need to consider. Preventing sexual violence and then English learners. Focused a lot on Title IX. And there's, you know, listed a number of different areas that Title IX actually impacts. I think most of us think along the lines of athletic equity, but it, Title IX also addresses sexual harassment and assault, pregnant parenting students, curricular access, single-sex classes or schools, which we do not have in our district, sexual orientation and gender identity. It was really focused on that we need to be sure that we have a Title IX coordinator, which we do, current down there, and that it's the need for mandatory and immediate reporting of violations or a suspected violation. What they focused on is most of our employees are aware of this. We do have training that is required by law that our employees do. But outside of that, we have volunteers that work with the track team or the swim team. Are they aware of all of these laws and what our guidelines are? So, that is something for us to consider. All of our documents, just as follow-up, all the documents that I've received from OCR, I've already shared with Nick. And he's made copies and has those. I put together a summary of each of the classes that I attended and I know people have contributed to our internal Google Doc site for that. I do think we should consider having a conversation about social media networking with our board at our summer retreat. And then our policy committee will review any OCR suggestions as we move forward. And that is the end. So, thank you. Are there any questions from other board members about other, about each? Well, as I look ahead, our meeting is adjourned. Oh, yes.
Do I, we just probably need to note this is the last meeting for this school year. And graduation for Carmel High School is this Thursday.
And it will be live streamed. So, if you are unable to be there, you could certainly watch. And other family members can watch from home as well. Is that going to be on Facebook or how are we live streaming our?
They livestream it. The families can sign up for, from the Coliseum.
Okay.
And we tried it to Facebook, but I think there's some restrictions because of the fact that they're doing it already.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Okay. Well, that sounds fantastic. Yes, Katie?
Do you know off the top of your head how many seniors we have graduating this year?
Thirteen hundred and ten-ish, I think.
You thought it was 1270?
Long bridge. That's a lot.
Yeah, it's a few kids.
Around 1300.
Be shaking a few hands that day.
Good reason, too.
Absolutely.
Fantastic reason. Well, thank you, everybody, for joining us. Officially, meeting adjourned. Thank you.